Welcome, everybody, to this special session of the Planning Board. For Tuesday, October 8th, this is a session purely to discuss one article related to our upcoming town meeting warrant. As always, this meeting is being held on Zoom with the meeting ID 6389291060. It will also be available after the meet, after the meeting for further review on the Norton Media Center's YouTube page. So call the meeting to order here and continue our public hearing on the upbaming town meeting warrant. And it's applying the Great Woods Overlay District to the Town of Norton zoning map as it relates to the MB State's MBTA Communities Bylaw. So in terms of just sequencing here. If you have looked in the Dropbox files for this session, speaking just to members of the public. We do have a file available which shows some review from SERPED, which is our Regional Planning Agency, related to this overlay discussion. And Paul, I'll just kind of start with some overall commentary from SERPED, if that makes sense here. So in our previous discussion in our last meeting, one of the discussions that we talked about was looking at the PGA parcel and discussing the potential for split zoning that lot to potentially reduce the impact. So as part of that discussion, SERPED shared details relating to how units are calculated according to the state's bylaw and specified that the state is looking at developable acres. So the 50 acre number is a number if we could find 50 acres in Norton that didn't have wetlands or other things that made it not buildable. So that is where we're seeing a lot of the differences between kind of the that raw 750 number from the state that we have laid out and what we're looking at on each of these maps. So we'll go through these and we'll go, I think it makes sense to run through all of these maps that SERPED has laid out for us, look at the data behind them. Any members of the board have any questions? Paul, I'll probably defer to you in terms of implications and how the model works and those types of things. And then we'll have an additional public comment period if anybody would like to speak further before. And now I'll do that before I accept any specific motions on the floor about which map we should put forward as a board. So does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Paul, do you want to share the SERPED document? Would you like me to share?
I can share it.
Okay. So again, just as a summary, this is the 3A technical assistance from SERPED, which is done through a grant. And on that scrolling onto where are you? You're starting at the beginning. Okay. So one of the things that I know you kind of highlighted going into the summary on page two here is again, I think a little bit of what I just spoke to is the three bullet points are what the state requires. The 15 units per acre, the district minimum, and the overall unit capacity minimum. And again, that is requirements considering excluded land. We need to consider excluded land in all of these. So wetlands, state-owned properties, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you for the emphasis on that. So again, this is the initial baseline scenario that we had. This includes the New England Ice Cream, the 40B and the oil company lot next to, in between that and the existing multifamilies on 140. So you can see the total acreage is around 97.1. All of that is developed with the exception of the PGA property. And we've, but we're deducting 14 and a half acres due to wetlands and everything else, basically. And then if you scroll on to the next page, you can see just a baseline of the requirements, again, excluding not developable area. What the model says in theory, if you tore everything down and built every lot up to its maximum potential capacity, what you could maybe get. But as we've mentioned, most of those lots are developed. Rob, well, before we move on, Rob, did you have a question related to this baseline scenario here? You are currently let me see here.
There we go.
Just let me, it was saying host is not allowing till just a second ago.
Huh, weird.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
Anyhow, the question just being, no, when you, the wetlands you had drawn on that map, is there any significance to their, how much should we read into the way they're drawing?
That's, those are the wetland boundaries that we have in GIS. I think as we mentioned in the last session, they're not flagged. So they're what we think is there in terms of when concert, if we ever look to do something, conservation would go in there and have to do that whole, their whole process.
Okay, so they're a little bit arbitrary, just doing the best you can.
Not arbitrary, but they're based on Paul.
The reason I'm asking is because the wetlands in this map do cover a little more, everything is fattened up a little bit more. So they cover more area than the old map. What I was looking for is to establish that that's actually meaningless. It just happens to be the way the artwork is, but you, you just, these are just meant to be general statements.
Is it also, Paul, potentially including like the, like a 25 foot buffer around the perimeter?
In their calculation, they indicated they took out that 25 foot no build zone. So just, Rob, to just add to Tim, what Tim was saying is if they're, if, if, this is true of any site in town, if there's a proposal for development, then if there hasn't been a wetland survey done for three years, conservation requires an updated wetland survey. So wetlands move with more rainfall and some other factors. Wetlands have been growing, they've been expanding out. And we don't know that in this area because we haven't had a wetland survey done in well over three years. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think the answer is actually what I was saying is that's, it's a little bit arbitrary as far as artwork goes. You know, it's not meant to state any specific measurements because otherwise I would be questioning how the wetlands grew from the map presented previously to the ones now.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, so, so I'm just clarifying that then is there's no meaning to the fact that, to that is.
It could be a different GIS data set that they were using. I pulled, the last map I pulled from our assessor map, which you know, it's very possible it could be different.
What I'm doing is I'm sitting here with an iPad going back and forth between them and the difference.
Yeah, okay.
Anyhow, it's meaningless. And just for anybody else that notices that, it's meaningless. Would that be the statement?
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah.
Okay, so scrolling on to page five, I guess here. This is essentially what we left the map in, in our previous session. We've removed in this, in this case, the New England Ice Cream property as well as the 40B and that one commercial property in between the 40B and the multifamilies. So the overall acreage for this is 76.8 with 14.2 of that is wetlands. So you're down to 62.7 acres. And you can see how that models out. So that is roughly 300 units less than the previous map. And it also brings, again, as we've discussed, brings those existing multifamilies into conformance with existing zoning through the overlay. And thank you for highlighting this, Paul. And the compliance model reads this as the potential to develop new housing units, even though there's already existing multifamilies on the site. So in terms of actual built capacity in town, could somebody tear something down and put something in its place? Yes. But one that wouldn't be quick, that wouldn't be something where we flip a switch and immediately is an immediate drain on the school, on the town budgets. But it would potentially allow them to expand if they wanted to.
Yeah, just maybe another way of stating this is if one of those quads, the fourplexes were to be redeveloped and with six units instead of four. The, the, the state's calculation views that as six new units, but in reality, it's only two. So that's again, one example of how it's over, how that compliance methodology just overstates what, what is, what could actually happen.
Thank you. Okay. And then going to page seven for scenario two. I will, I know SERPED mentioned this later in the document. This scenario is take away the multifamilies, look at just the PGA lot. And again, deduct the wetlands. And they have provided some guidance saying that historically, you should not have zoning limited to one parcel. And while they can't provide a legal opinion on how that would feel against spot zoning. They feel, they do feel that, that the wording that they use was trying to think if I'm jumping down to the bottom here. They are reasonably confident that would, it would be accessible, acceptable by the state. That's a comment that they made on page 10. So ultimately, it is the board's decision on how we feel about that and whether we feel we want to propose that. But that is the guidance that we have received from SERPED related to this. So Paul, I'm sorry I make you scroll back and forth, but for, on page seven. That's 2A. Which is the entire PGA parcel, if you look at that in isolation, it is 68.3 acres, of which 14.2 is deducted as potential wetlands or other not buildable, leaving 54 acres. And you can see how that works out in the chart here. And Rob, question that you had? Sorry, you're muted again. It's not letting you unmute again? That's weird.
Asking it to.
You have to ask me to unmute, then I get a pop up to undo it. But if I click on it, you have that blocked.
Huh.
That's true. Oh, let's see. Okay, sorry. Okay.
Nothing to worry, as long as Tim calls on people as they get their hand up, it's a good way to maintain meeting order, in my opinion.
That's not what we intend, though.
Yeah, that wasn't, yeah, okay.
Okay, so did you have a question, comment?
Yeah, I wanted to go back. You said that they've had the state already has confirmed that they would pass this if we voted it in?
No, really? Are you talking relating to the spot zoning?
Well, a minute ago, you said, as they've commented here, they would already, this, they've confirmed the states have already approved it. Was that true?
No, the state hasn't reviewed any of this. They were asking the state, I don't believe they'd received a response.
They have not.
The guidance that they're giving, if we were to look at an overlay which included only one lot, which would potentially traditionally be seen as spot zoning. They have said that because it's an overlay district and not the base zoning, they said that they are the guidance that the wording they used would be reasonably confident it would be acceptable by the state. As in, we feel comfortable with that the state would view this as, would be okay with this being one lot if that's what we chose to do. Separately, whether the board feels it's appropriate to put this on one lot, that's a separate discussion.
Okay, fair enough. That's what I wanted to understand.
Yep.
Yeah, I know you can break it up. Was it Lexington, I believe, has it in 12 little lots dotted all around town?
Okay. So again, this is how the chart, the model breaks down for the whole lot. And then if we look to split zone that parcel, again, looking just at the PGA parcel, but reducing it basically as far as we could. We end up with 56.9 acres, 11.9 of which is wetlands, which puts us at 45. But if you scroll down to page 10, you can see that basically because of the other rules that we have around this zone in terms of setbacks, in terms of all of those things. The calculation that we get in terms of is it the density denominator, Paul, the fancy, fancy math, basically meaning that because of how we have set up the bylaws around this, we can, they're confident that we would be able to get through this overlay of only 45 acres because it would in theory hold the capacity needed.
Well, you'll see the, there's a caveat that.
They're also waiting for the state to clarify, yes.
Right, because it's, it's possible the state sees something that we didn't factor. So that's why they're recommending, you know, we have some, you know, some buffer, some safety, you know, blanket that would protect against we didn't know that was a wetland there or something along those lines.
Yes. Understood. But they are giving a bit of a buffer there in terms of the quote unquote paper unit capacity in that model as well. So and just to note on page 11, if anybody has read. They did provide some specific guidance about utilizing projects, using 40B projects as part of this overlay. Basically saying that the state has specifically told them not to do it. So that's so even though we had it in our initial layout. Where I think it would be quote unquote above and beyond the numbers that were needed. It probably doesn't make sense to include after the fact. So I'll start again with the members who are joining us here. Do we have any specific questions about any of the maps that we just walked through? And after that, I'll go to public comment if there's anything further in that respect. And I'll just say from a public comment standpoint, I have no issues with people using the chat to talk about a specific, a question, how do I do this in the meeting, et cetera? Comments in the chat are not part of the meeting minutes, they are not entered into the record. So if you would like to speak, I'd ask that you use the react function within the Zoom meeting and quote unquote, raise your virtual hand. And we will definitely call, call on anybody who would like to speak related to this. So before we get to that, I'll go to members of the board for any questions, comments about the materials we just reviewed.
Tim?
Yes, Steve.
Yeah, I got a technicality question. After we try to zone this area, if, if at town meeting it fails, are we bound to that two-year period where we can't try to rezone those parcels?
I think there would be a level of discussion about what is substantially different compared to what we would look at the next time. In terms of town meeting mechanics. I understand what you're saying in that when you try to do something at town meeting and it doesn't work, you have to, there's a cooling off period.
Right.
My expectation would be if this fails at town meeting, then the next step would be to look at potentially another, another property in town.
Sure.
Or a portion of this property in another property in town, which would be substantially different.
Well, that, that's sort of what I mean, where like, let's say we include the apartments across the street. If this all fails with those included, and then we go to another meeting without the PGA parcel, parcel, can we still use the apartments across the street? Or are they a part of that two-year cooling off period?
I'm not sure that that's a hypothetical. I'm prepared to give a definitive answer on at this point. Paul, if you have any specific thoughts to that effect, then.
Yeah, I think at this point, I'd like to talk to the town manager's office. As if it's a substantial change, we, it's pop, it may be possible, but that's why, maybe, but I need to get confirmation on that.
I'm going into this looking for this to be approved.
If they were going to be part of that cooling off period and not, and unable to be used again, I'd rather not include them in this proposal. And like only go for the PGA parcel alone. And in theory, if this district works out well and people wanted to, we could run an article to include those apartments at another meeting.
That's certainly a motion we could entertain. I think my understanding that in speaking with the finance committee and the select board is that they are generally looking to not encourage as much new development as they can. I'm not sure if I worded that as the best way that it could be done.
I think I understand the sentiment.
So any, if you'd like to make a motion, that's certainly some, when we get to that point, that's certainly something that the board can address.
Okay.
Any other members of the board have questions, comments about the maps that we reviewed here? Rob, you're still fighting that. There we go.
No, I got it this time. It's working now.
No, I, I fixed it. It, people can.
Not the maps. I do want to present some ideas of my own though, but I want to let you finish what you're going through, not, you know, sticking in the middle at Muddy.
I think I'm looking for comments or questions from, from you, Rob, so, or Jim, or.
Then I will start. Someone else is sharing, if you don't mind, I'm going to take a share.
That's Paul, yes.
I am off.
Okay, let me just share and let me just take play from the start. So I did, and remember I was asked two meetings ago to do this, if I was going to come in questioning the plan to come up with some alternatives. So I have worked on that and done so. And so I just want to put up some other options. First off, I am going to speak to this because it was brought up before and it's clear there is a difference here. Is who we should be working for and what, I don't know if I phrased that right, but I considered what is best for Norton. I did not consider what is best for the state, just didn't care, any political, anything, I don't even want to hear it. Anything other than what is best for Norton. So that is the philosophy of this plan. Not looking at any other interests in our own town.
Okay.
So first of all, what is best for Norton is not increasing the multifamily footprint in Norton. Increasing residential, there's a net loss on our budgets that we get from that. That was something that brought up in FinCom as well. Norton needs to retain its valuable commercial land and infrastructure, especially the prime slots, and encourage facilitate commercial and retail business that do net, I know we've talked about gross taxes collected, but those do net a higher amount of taxes for us. Norton does have an imbalance that puts the expenses on the backs of the homeowners without sufficient commercial help. So we, we are tipped the wrong way and need to regain that balance. That's something for us to work at over the years, obviously, but we do need to. Norton needs to fully comply with the state mandate. I've heard a lot of talk today about being another Milton and all that. I'm going to go right on the record and say, I do not think that's a good path. But I want to comply in a way that, you know, we'll give them all buildable land, but it's not real likely someone's going to make that decision. And that is our best case scenario right there. If we completely comply and nothing happens, that is what's best for Norton. So let me go on.
Rob, do you mind if I just say one thing for, just for anybody from members of the public here?
Oh, there's a hand up. I'm sorry.
No, no, Cheryl's had her hand up, I think, to speak for a bit, but just from the, from what we're doing this evening for October town meeting. The lots that we covered in that initial scroll through of all of those maps are the only ones that were noticed for this town meeting.
I'm aware of that.
So for the purposes of what we submit to town meeting, we can look at whatever we want and talk about whatever we want tonight.
Okay.
But
I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
My next slide actually speaks to it.
Sure.
Okay, no, it's a fair point, Tim. I felt like I had to. So can we still plan, change the plan at this juncture? Yes, absolutely. But it would improve, involve giving proper noticing, et cetera. We can do that, but it might be too late to submit an amended plan in time for the fall town meeting. As a matter of fact, it is too late. If we have to renotice people and all that, we will miss that. But I'm going to maintain that's not the end of the world. I've looked at the penalties for real, what they really are and all. And we could ride this. There's a few ways here. There's special town meetings. I'm pretty sure that select board would work with us if we were trying to come forward with a plan that they agreed was a Norton's best case scenario. Next Springs Town Meeting, we spent three months out of compliance, that's not ideal. But we could survive that better than something that's really a long-term deal that I don't think is good for this town. If we're putting together a plan that looks passable and puts us in compliance, I don't think the state is going to ride us that hard for those three months. I realize I'm just guessing. You know, they could go ballistic, but that is my thought. I personally, I don't see blinking in the faces of that threat either. But that's why it can be changed, not easily, but yes, it can be done. So.
Okay.
Go on. Factors to consider, and you guys had your own push and pull factors. I had my own. Already developed by simply not real likely to go anywhere, honestly. Or if it did get developed, if they went ahead and did this, it's not a real change in the existing population density in that area. In other words, fine, go ahead and do it. And then minuses, giving up valuable infrastructure, I put them at the top because it was tough to avoid. A lot of the places that I'm going to suggest actually do, I think you're still giving them silver, but you know, I know some are opposed to that, but we'll see. Giving up prime commercial real estate does matter to me. I do not think we want to, this is to me frittering away a valuable thing using the TPC lot this way. Personal opinion. And undeveloped, not built on already, I'd rather avoid that because that's just a total net gain in population. It comes back to what I was saying about, we really don't want to boost that footprint because ultimately it, you know, that was the thing that came out of FinCom. It doesn't work well for us. We'd rather where it's built on already. And if they want to build this, we're not really increasing anything. It was there already and we just replaced it with newer. So the first one, and this is at the Taunton Line. There's more than ample space, nearby employment, because, and this is, this being a long-term thing, let's say over the next 10 years that it did get built there. If you start walking south right from that map, all kinds of work, you know, let's face it, this is for lower income families, they tend to do lower paying jobs or a lot of labor jobs, like warehouse work, drivers, things like that. And there's companies that employ a lot of that right next to it. It's really not a bad place to put such a development. There are three single-family homes at the western, it's here. This is one, this is one, this is one. After that is all business. I'm just acknowledging that. So.
Okay.
It would be three single-family homes included in this. Okay.
How many, how many options do you lay out? Just so I'm.
I'm going to have eight options and then fourth, it's, there's a few slides here, so I'm going to try and move them. I I'm gonna have eight options and then fourth, it it's, there's a few slides here, so I'm gonna try and move them.
Okay.
But I will take questions as we go, and I see some hands up.
Yeah, I think let's go through this and then we can kinda do.
Taking questions?
I think if there are specific questions, we can bring it back up, but I know Cheryl's had her hand up since before you started, so that's.
No, that's good. I I'm I'm gonna do this whichever way you like. Okay, so there is that. Um, notice down there in the thing, that is ninety five point eight acres. Um, I do know there's a touch of wetlands in there, but not bad. We know a lot of that is developable because you can see stuff sitting right on it. Um, this, Tim, is the one that I raised in the meeting a ways. Back and it was shot down on the basis that it was predominantly single family homes. I'm bringing it back because if you look at the map. That was not really a correct. Piece of information, so. We see here it is not predominantly single family homes. It is very developable land. And let's me go on. Um, so if we were concerned about the single family homes, you can bring it in here. You were still. Um, over your fifty acres, all in one slot here. And now you have a buffer before there are any single family homes. Those two things right off the end there, those are yards. There's, that's what they have for neighbors already. And that would sit between them and anything else. We do know, okay, let's go to this one. This is recently developed multifamily, and what we are looking at is um east. The East Main Apartments and Red Mill Village combined. That comes to fifty seven point nine acres. We know it's all buildable because somebody just built on it. There's a low likelihood that anyone would just come in and decide to tear down a bunch of brand new multifamily units just to build. Multifamily units, but they are free to. We are not giving the state bum land here at all. This is a site that could absolutely do it. And maybe ten years from now, they do decide to do something. As you've said many times, Tim, this is a long term thing. So we shouldn't worry about that. If it did happen, it would be a little change to the population density, and that's one of the other things, folks, that it's not like we don't want these units. We just don't wanna increase our population density. So if it did happen, that that's not the end of the world here. Existing older multifamily, uh, what we're looking at here is uh, the Glen. And I grabbed the industrial right up, the the commercial space right up there. That actually would not be a bad place in town to have a little village like that, because remember, these buildings would have shops on the first floor too. And the Glen, um, no disrespect, but it is basically a low in- income housing. Project currently, so we'd not much changes. Basically, you would take down older and put up newer. Um, it is what the you, the state is talking about is denser than the Glen is, so there'd be. We only partially mitigate the budget hit with that. I just wanna be clear, I'm not eliminating it at all with that, just mitigating it some. Commercial buildings are likely to remain, but if they did sell them, it's fair game to develop and we would wind up with that. You know, you you could wind up with such an area like that with one twenty three just kinda cutting through the middle of it. Technically not a terrible deal. Option five, if we were keeping up one forty by Mansfield. It does use up prime commercial land because that stretch right through here, I hate using it that way. But willing to consider it. I don't mind using this because be honest, chances of getting a supermarket are greater if we keep the TPC course and this became a retail area up in here. Um, this guy Gator can just keep his place, you know, let's face it, he. He isn't going anywhere. That that's structured to be a tax write off and they like it that way, eh, as much as everybody else hates it. Uh, the mobile home part, um, it's not dumping on them in my opinion. I'm willing to take input, those that disagree with me. But it, I'm sure my mouse just went. So, um, but they keep in mind that here they control their own fate. They can say, we live here, you're not gonna build it here. Whereas if it's zoned over here, they can have that pop up next to them and there's not a thing they can say about it. It'll just happen. This stretch here, I actually, you know, I say giving up because I personally have had a vision of us building a nice retail strip coming into town this way to. Generate revenue. Because these would have shops on the first floor, I'm not totally turned off by the idea of using the this stretch. For such things, just put up those type of buildings all along here. So that is some that the state did it. I think Norton would. We could live with that. Option six, still at the Mansfield line, and I'll go a little faster because these are near each other. You have. The shopping center, um, th- this is some new development here. You do have the senior home and this is a fairly, this is the auto parts complex. And that alone comes to seventy three point six, blows right by it. And. You know, and existing, you know, what it's made of. So this is another option we can do without sacrificing that TPC resource, which I think is a gem. I think it's, we're squandering it. You'll see I'm trying to stay away from it, Tim. It's because I think we're squandering it using it this way. If there was a concern, because I know I did hear some objections about the Roach Brothers. Plaza that some folks wanna still keep that shred of hope that they might. We can do that. Notice they have the same things. Because we still are fifty five point six. It's just we blow it off by more if we include that. Um, option eight, also still up at the Mansfield line, dropped Roach Brothers, dropped these multifamilies in case. Folks don't like that. The trailer is not involved in this either. You've got the auto parts warehouse. This stretch here and up here, and you're still at fifty six point two. That's if you wanted it up at this end of town at all. In my opinion, other than the fact I could live with them here, I don't like it up at that end of the town. Myself and um, think some of the other options were better. Um, wanna go a little further now? Suboptions are smaller tracks. They're under fifty acres, but they can be assembled to create further options. Um, I wanna clarify a couple of points because I know there was some confusion on this. Our acreage does not have to be contiguous.
Correct.
I don't believe it. I I thought with Lexington was a bit extreme. I kinda chuckled when I saw it. They have, like I said, ten tiny things dotted all around. Um, state eh, but Maura Healy herself praised it. And so. You know, apparently that is acceptable. I think that's a bit extreme. I would think two, three would, we don't wanna create a pit, a quilt. One parcel does have to be over twenty five acres. I believe that is a requirement. So and then no parcels under five acres. So here we have, just again, take the Glen by itself. That is twenty one point two acres, and I actually under drew it. You have. Areas like the offices are over here, and I believe this is multifamily in here. You could turn this into a thirty acre swatch if you wanted to. But but I'm looking just here at things we can add to other things. East Main Street Apartments by themselves. Um, is eleven point oh acres. You could make that as an addition. If you got something barely over fifty, you put that next to it, and now we are in compliance. So option three, if you really wanted to stay up here, do just this. Because like I said, this is not terrible deal if they came in and did it through here for us. These are already tall apartments. They aren't gonna take that down. We know that. Albertos up here, well, if they do, they do, but you know, um, I like Albertos though, so I'd hate to see it. Place you can go and get away from Mark Sweeney. Suboption four, our favorite property. I just had to throw this one in here, Tim. I couldn't help it. It's five point eight acres. We're looking at Elm Street. Possibly disqualified by its status. They said buildable land, and the fact that this has to be cleaned up could. Wipe it out by state. I'll I'll admit that. I don't think anybody would go for it, to be honest. You know, that's why I wrote, go ahead, pal. You have fun with that. I honestly think the projections of somebody ever coming and developing it if we put in silver are extremely ambitious and. High hoping, but you know, in my opinion, I I see it the other way. We'd use it as a thing where it ain't gonna happen there. Type thing. Uh, but if I'm wrong, it could get someone to pick up the tab on the sewer. Just saying you you have, might have that side benefit, because I know you guys are trying to get that through. And then other questions?
Yeah. So I think. I think it's good to look at all these options again, Rob, and again, we'd be looking at this. Any of those would be something that we would have to look at outside of this fall town meeting or.
Absolutely.
Whether it even, whether or not this passes. There's nothing that says we can't pass something at fall town meeting and in spring town meeting, say. We're gonna revise our overlay to do this X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
But note that I'll just say for all of this is that the one of the requirements of this. Statute is that the properties have to be developed, developable as of right. Which means that. The planning board essentially won't be able to say no.
Correct.
To anything that goes into these properties as long as they meet the guidelines. So when we start talking about properties that are. Maybe a little bit, yeah. Where we're not sure if we'd like something here, but we're not sure if we'd like this here, we may not have a choice. Um, in the seven. Years, seven and a half years I've been on the board. We've said no to one site plan approval project and it's still in court.
Yep.
So the the bar to turn down a site plan review project is really high. And it basically just means we'll see you in court if you turn us down.
Yeah, but none of that scares me because this is where I'm going with highly unlikely this gets built.
I understand.
It will meet your requirements, okay, but. For one reason or another, it's not likely any human's ever gonna wanna make that decision. They'll they'll decide, yeah, I could build there, but you know, I'm I'm gonna. You know, East Main Street, I'm gonna have to buy all these new buildings, tear them down just to build new ones. I'm not making money on that deal and they'll they'll walk away, but it is doable. That's the thing, and that's the, I read the law carefully. As long as it's doable, we're good. And that is our best case scenario right there if they decide not to do it at all. And all of my sites were picked with the fact with that in mind that probably not do it at all.
Yeah.
Couple of spots where it could happen, but.
Yeah.
Tim, is it all right if I comment real quick?
I was gonna say, I appreciate the thought that you put into it, Rob, for for future thoughts. Yeah.
Steve, just before you go, I wanna underscore the correctness of something Tim did say. Um, and that's what I have here. When I say, yes, we can change it. It does involve this. There is process and things we would not make fall meetings. So what Tim was just saying is anything that I'm suggesting here. If we're going with it, fall meetings off the table.
I I would add also that in the materials that we got from Serp Ed, all of the work that they have done for us for the site reviews and preparation. And all of the compliance modeling has been funded by a grant. That grant is gone.
Yeah, they spent eight months to come up with a suggestion, and then I've spent one month to come up with eight suggestions, so.
They they followed our direction in doing all of this work. Uh, based on the work that we've been doing for more than a year.
Instructions they were given, then they did a good job. I agree.
Yeah, so. The choices that we would have if we go continue after this town meeting are. Um, whether it is something that town staff looks to try to do on their own, or if this is something that needs to. Be something that we work to have funding for in some way.
I'm gonna go on the record, Tim, that I'm against mutinies, and I'd rather we didn't have any renegades out there trying to. You know, like I would be horrified if these ideas I put up all of a sudden did turn up on the floor of town meeting, because that's not what I'm trying to cause at all. This is stuff for the future. I'll be honest, I had this deck last week and a couple of people knew I had it, wanted me to put it up and all that stuff, and I wanted. It to be seen first by the planning board from me in a meeting, and that's why it's waited till tonight to get presented. We're trying to play it nicely, you know, but I wanted to put these ideas on the table, and I think they should be. People should consider as they're weighing what they wanna vote for at town meeting, do we wanna eh eh, do we wanna go these other directions? Because there is still an option to do it. Go ahead, Stephen. I'm sorry, I was.
It's okay. No, I wanted to say thank you. Like seriously, thank you for putting some maps up. Cause there's only been a few available this whole time. We've whittled it down fairly. We all played our part. But it is nice to see the options laid out. It's like you did a good job. And a few of those, I I don't disagree with at all. There's two, I think two of your 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 maps do include senior housing, though, I think.
One did, but that, we looked into that. It's not senior by the, the land is not designated senior. It's the development. That development can have a different purpose.
But sure, but either way, I just, yeah, thank you for doing it. Thank you for.
Yeah, you know, the likelihood they would tear down all those new buildings to put up new buildings is financially some, no investor's gonna.
Sure.
Do that.
Cool.
Okay, but no, thank you for going through that. And I'll ask. Rob, you said you wanted to take questions just from a, I'm not sure.
Otherwise, I'm gonna go back on mute and call myself done. Are there any other questions?
I know, Ms. Senior, you'd have your hand up for a while. Is there a comment that you'd like to make in general about? What we've went through at the beginning of the meeting or anything else? I'm sorry if you're trying to speak. We don't hear you.
She's not, she's not muted.
Is it Cheryl Lance Senior you're calling for? Yeah, she does.
Cheryl, Cheryl, I'll give you, Cheryl, I'll give you a minute to speak and then I'll move on to um. To Brady who had their hand up next, if that's. Okay.
Then go to any slide you want.
Sh- Cheryl, if there's, if you uh, are having technical issues and you wanna come back, just let us know and uh. We'll definitely call on you when when you uh, are ready to. Um, the next person had raised their hand in the Zoom meeting, the name just says Brady. If you can just state your name and address for the record, please, sir. And you are muted. I do see the mute, the microphone next to your name.
You have to unmute yourself, sir. There you go.
Good there. Frank Kearns, Maple Street. I'm sorry?
Yep. Nope, go ahead, Frank.
Um, yeah, I was just wondering, Rob, uh, the Taunton Line ones uh, that you have, where are they located?
Um, here, let me go to them. You talking about this one here? What you would have here, let me see if I can kinda get it. You'd have the, I don't know what type of facility it is right now, if it's a hotel or my. You know, whatever's going on there, but that would be right about where I'm waving on my my mouse. The Holiday Inn would be off this way. That is four ninety five. This is the road that'll eventually turn into uh, Wash- South Washington, is it? Heads off that way.
Alright, so that's a mile standardish.
Correct, just off of it. And so when I speak to nearby employment, that's what I mean. If we had. The housing in here, there's a ton of employment opportunities right that direction. So there's actually some synergy to this.
Now, what is, what is, Tim, what is the requirement or Paul or whomever on board? What is the requirement for? These developments to be close to an MBTA station, or is it just?
There's none. It has to be in Norton. It has to be in Norton.
Okay.
The. So it has to be, the land that Norton sets aside was designated by Norton's town adjacency to the MBTA. So where we put it, eh, within the town limits is ultimately up to us. But I'll say, I said it before, I'll say it again. I apologize if everybody gets sick of hearing me say it. Um, none of the parcels outside of what we've showed in the original map were noticed for town meeting. Um, so they're not gonna be something that we would put on the floor at fall town meeting, because they haven't been. None of these property owners have been invited to come to our meetings and all of that stuff, so.
So none of the abuddas know, so this won't go to a fall meeting or it will?
None of the maps that Rob has shown, the maps that we went over at the beginning. Talking about the multifamilies on one forty and the potential for New England ice cream and. Those properties, those are the ones that were noticed for this specific town meeting article.
Okay, so the original ones you talked at the last meeting?
Correct.
Last month, that those would be going in front of the town meeting.
This, the same ones we've been talking about for six months. Yep.
And then what is the, uh, so you can't, you you can't um, include the forty B because the serpent said you couldn't?
I think that if we, I think if we included it in addition to the other properties, it wouldn't make a difference.
Okay.
Um, what Serp had, the guidance that they have gotten from the state and all of the technical assistance. Groups like them that work with the state is. groups like them that work with the state is, um, don't put this overlay order over a forty B and think that you're done. Um, because we will not accept that and you will be out of compliance.
Okay. So you can't do it.
We're not stupid. Please don't try it is the, uh, the less politically correct way to frame that, I think, from the state.
Yeah, no, I agree. Um, and then what, what is the final number you're looking at? For, um, the units? Cause I had asked this question in the last meeting.
So the final paper number from the state based on if you find fifty acres that have no wetlands on them. Um, at fifteen units per acre is seven hundred and fifty. The board would be, um, the board has not yet voted on what we will put forward to town meeting, but all of the, um, if you'd like me to pull up the original presentation that walks through all of the maps that we showed. Um, I'm happy to run through any of those specifically if you'd like to look at them.
I have a question on what you just said.
Yes.
You're talking about, you're saying the number is now seven fifty?
The number, the, the state's requirement is.
Acres is seven fifty, but what is the acreage you have it down to? Like you're, I think what Frank is asking is not what is the right number of acres to hit seven fifty? He wanted to know what you have, you have, you were at seventeen fifty last we heard. So both, I know you've had a lot of conversations, but most of these people have not heard anything since that seventeen fifty number. What is it down to now?
Um, are we talking about the, the original delineation? So including all the things we talked about at the beginning, fifteen thirty-three. What we left last meeting is twelve twenty, which again includes the entire PGA parcel as well as the multifamilies across the street. That is those two numbers in isolation. Um, and again, assuming entire teardowns in the multifamily and building back to their maximum capacity and building out the TPC parcel to its fullest extent. Um, and as I said, I think to the select board, I've said it so many times over the past couple of weeks. Um, I have a very hard time believing that the PGA would choose to build up the entire lot. That's a buffer to their fancy golf course. Um, I think at most they maybe would put something on the front and then leave a big healthy buffer towards the golf course itself. And if they allow development on their property, it would probably be higher end potentially. Can't promise anything, can't, it's pure speculation from my seat.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's.
That is pure speculation on my part. I will admit that one thousand percent.
Okay. So twelve twenty, um, I'm going with your lower number here because actually I want to give you all the benefit we can. So you've reduced it from seventeen fifty to twelve twenty. And because we're talking now about specifically what you're going to put out at town meeting. Um, that would be the twelve twenty, correct?
Twelve twenty is one of the scenarios that we have in front of us in that, in that document. Yes. What we put forward at town meeting is what this board will vote on at the end.
Yeah. Was there one at nine, ten or something, nine, something? One got down to triple digits, right?
Yes, that was partial PGA property only.
Yep.
So, um, did you have another comment, Rob? I know there's a couple of their hand raised.
Clarify Frank's question a little bit because I got what he was asking. He's actually been pinging me asking if I knew this too. And I just said, we're gonna wait for the meeting and let them present. Um, so Frank, you wanted to know what the number was going to be, and I guess it's twelve twenty. If I understand.
Yeah, I was just looking, what, what number is the, the planning board? You guys putting towards for the town meeting for a vote? You know what I mean? Is it gonna be?
We're voting on that tonight. So.
I'm sorry?
We're voting on that at the conclusion of this meeting.
Okay. And that's an executive session?
No, that'll be in this meeting.
Okay. No, that's, I was just wondering if there was multiple scenarios that were going to the town meeting or just one specific number?
We will be sending one set, one thing, one map to town meeting that we will vote on in this session.
Okay. Because a lot of people are nervous about the impact of the higher number.
I understand.
So, okay. We talked about that the last meeting, Tim, so.
Yep.
Okay. Um, and I think and then is, so if we, if, if this fails at town meeting, is it a two-year cooling off period or no?
So for meetings, for articles at town meeting, if they go before town meeting and fail, there is generally a cooling off period for that same article to be discussed again. With the idea being you can't put the same article forward five times and eventually people will get sick of hearing you talk and it'll get accepted. Um, or you'll, or you'll, at one point you'll pack a meeting and get it through and then whatever. Um, that, I think that that's something that would generally, um, I would like to think that that would be restricted to, um, putting forward like the same map again. And saying and doing the same thing again. If this fails at fall town meeting, then my expectation would be that if we are moving forward with a special town meeting or in springtime meeting or whenever we talk about this again, that it would be with a different map. And we would probably adjust the second, but the second article, which speaks to the language, um, since it does say like the Great Woods Overlay District, if we put it somewhere that's not near this area, we're probably going to rename it. And if we evaluate any other language as well, we'd probably do those together.
Okay. So if, if it fails at town meeting, do we lose grants from the state?
That is the potential along with other, other things. Yes.
We lose funding. Because I've been, I've been following the Milton and I'm not, you know, I'm not up for fighting the state on it. Cause it's gonna go through anyways. They've already lost a million dollars in funding. Um, but it's still the, it sounds like the, um, the court is with Milton as of today. So, but I, I just, I just want, you know, as Rob has stated, I just want what's best for the town. The lowest amount of units that we can get away with. You know, we have a problem with, you know, like I had said the last meeting, Tim, that we had, um, the biggest override tried and it failed. We get a problem with the water, the schools. Um, if we put in the huge, bigger numbers, you're gonna need more money for, you know, fire, police, infrastructure. So that's, that's my concern.
Yeah. I think to, to what Rob was presenting, the point of that is net new development. Is what the number would really be the impact on the town. Um, so what the paper number is and what the realistic net new number is, I think are, tend to be two different things in all of these scenarios.
Okay.
See, in a few areas, as I had, this could be seen as an opportunity. Um, I'm talking about replacing the old buildings in the Glen, which you hear a lot of complaints about the condition of them. And now with new buildings, um, that's not a terrible thing. You know, um, I, although I had a different vision for that stretch along one forty where those apartments are, that wouldn't be terrible if they did that. Put the multifamilies up though and had the shops right, going right along that front edge. Um, you know, for people to shop from and generate retail dollars. And I will mention that, you know, when I talk about creating balance, if you have retail on the first floor earning and retail is not putting kids into the school system. Hmm. Okay. We're making a net gain. So that retail helps cover if we're losing some money on the, uh, on the residential up above it. So those mitigate a little bit through there.
Yeah, I agree. That's it. Steven said that the last meeting.
Well, yeah, I was trying, I was trying to find all the math, you know, especially if I'm challenging this plan. I was trying to write a case for it to myself. To be honest, Tim, you can see strategically that helps me understand things better. So I did sit down and go, what would be the upsides of doing some of this? And that is one of them. And that yes, retail on the first floor does mitigate some of this financial and not all of it. I did the math on that and I'm not going to go on that long thing, but it does help a, a little bit. And there's some stretches along there where it might not be a bad deal for Norton if they went in, we, we got some of that built. Okay. But other ones like East Main Apartments, we're, we're, you know, I'm kidding, man. I'm obviously putting up brand new stuff. Nobody's gonna do that.
Hmm, exactly.
Frank, I do see another hand raised. If there's anything else that you wanted to add, otherwise I would, um, ask Debbie if she'd like to speak.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, Tim. I want to know and the voters and citizens of Norton want to know why so many members of the planning board have had, you keep saying, we've had this a year and a half, a year and a half. In that year and a half, why didn't you come up with any of these eight different alternatives? To me, that seems like you're not doing your job and that you've have your heels dug into that TPC when it has been stated over and over again, loud and clear that that property can generate and be of better use to Norton if it was built commercially. So why are you not considering or the board members not considering any of Rob's eight? You have been blowing smoke at us with scare tactics. Seven, over seventeen hundred units you started off. You're down to twelve twenty. That's still four hundred and seventy units. That is gonna be a burden to the schools and you just heard the citizens loud and clear in the override. So I would really like you and Laura Parker to address why the board hasn't come up with any of these other options. And why are your heels dug in? Direct and honest and transparent, please.
Sure. I'm happy to give you direct answers on each of those points. I will say,
After me.
I will say for this fall town meeting, none of, no other parcels in town, other than what we've talked about have been noticed. So I think it's patently unfair to suggest that we throw another set of parcels in town in front of town meeting when those residents have not been informed about the article.
Excuse me, Tim.
In terms of, I'd like to, I'd like to respond to your questions. Would you like me to continue?
And then I would like a rebuttal.
Please. So in terms of why we selected these parcels, we selected these parcels after going through a number of rounds of discussions with Serp Ed, who is the regional planning agency. Um, if you'd like to watch our meetings in April about when we settled on this area to move forward with and talk about over the last six months. You're, please feel free to watch that meeting. There's nothing, it's all taken place in open meetings over the last several months. Um, in terms of site selection, we were working on this a year ago. And we went through, I know you've seen the presentation that I've given a couple of times, all of the maps of town, looking at different, as Rob put in his as well, push and pull factors in terms of what might make sense for multifamily development. And that's how we landed on where we are today. Um, people can feel free to disagree with what we chose. That's fine. If people would like to join the planning board and be part of these discussions as Rob has, I welcome them. Um, I would say, I think, I would say that at least three of our members have been appointed or write-in candidates because there haven't been enough people running for the board. So the fact, so any kind of statement that, um, the board is being filled up is, I find that laughable because we've had to appoint members through the select board on multiple occasions. So anybody who would like to join the planning board, you have my vote, even if it's a vote against myself.
Wonderful. That's so good to hear because what I heard you say, Rob, I mean, Tim, what I heard you say, Tim, is that in that year and a half and six months, you didn't know that land was available. As a planning board member, I thank you for volunteering. You're really planting a seed for many of us to do so. Because we're recognizing how important it is in directing and guiding our town. In addition to supporting our schools. Okay. But what I, I heard you say is in that six months or year and a half, the land Rob just talked about didn't just pop out. It just didn't appear. Isn't that the planning board's job? Go ahead, Rob.
I'll, I'll say, we looked at the entirety of town as part of this planning process. And we chose to move forward with the parcels we've selected. We didn't ignore any part of town. We didn't focus on this particular parcel. We looked at, we, with Serp Ed's guidance and looking at all of the data that they suggested, they selected four or five sites for our shortlist and we kicked three of them out immediately. And then we continued to narrow down to where we are today.
Okay. You just keep mentioning serpent. So I want to address serpent. Here's another philosophy thing that was brought up in another meeting. We, the people, the citizens of Norton, we don't have our nose led around by the government. It's us. That's what we expect of our leaders. We're the leaders.
Yes.
Um, can I just, Tim?
Uh, uh, I'm, Debbie, did you have any additional points or questions that you'd like me to answer today?
I would like to know, I would like to know why you are stuck on the fall town meeting. Number one.
Because we need to be in compliance by December thirty-first.
Yeah.
Okay. But Rob's point was it's not the end of the earth if we wait till the spring to do what's best for our town. Why aren't you addressing the value? Why aren't you addressing the value of the TPC land to future generated commercial funds for our town?
Can you answer this?
At no point did, did I say that I didn't, that I liked the idea of developing commercial land as residential. Um, there are no easy choices about where to put a bunch of multifamily properties where you don't have a special permit process to review them. And a significant portion of town would be very upset if you wanted to put multifamily in their backyard. Are some of the, the, the parcels Rob suggested interesting to think about? Yes. Um, would we consider them in a future, in a future discussion?
So why won't you pause and give us all, including the board and the citizens time to do what's really right for Norton? Why are you so quick to shoot us in the foot?
I like to think that talking in open sessions over a year and a half has given many people the opportunity to speak.
Oh, wait a minute. No, no, no. I'm gonna speak to every citizen, Tim.
Raising their hair, raising their hands.
No, the government in these protocols, instead of being direct, it's designed to keep us to the nth limit, which is why we don't want one unit over seven fifty. Okay? Anybody who does participate is giving up a great deal of their life for often ungrateful people. But it does, once you take that vow and that pledge, you have an obligation morally and ethically to do what's right for the town. Not because we're under a gun. I'm done.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I'd like to respond to that, Tim, myself.
I, if you'd like to respond, feel free. Otherwise I was gonna ask Ms. Senior to speak.
Slide in my presentation spoke about philosophy. Tim, Debbie, the answer to your question is Tim is like me, doing what he thinks is best. Obviously we have two different visions of what's best for Norton, but he is trying to do what he's best. I tried to do what he believes is best, just as much as I am. Whether or not we agree on that is aside the point. That is what we're both trying to do. Um, I do feel that when people are at least trying to do what they think is best, we can disagree on it, but I'd rather not get into too much anger over it. It's nothing personal. We're just trying to reach a right decision. Just, I wanted to add that, Tim.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah. And then if there's, are there any more, oh yeah, Bridgette?
No, I was gonna say, I see Ms. Senior's joined via another device now. So if she has the opportunity.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Praise be.
So let her go next. Yep.
Um, yes, persevered here. Um, so my first question had been about the parcels, the multis across from Arnold Palmer, uh, Palmer Boulevard. If they can be, if they are included in the overlay. If they are included in the overlay, but can be taken down. With three plus-floor apartment buildings added there. And the planning board will have very little control or input as to how those go up. Then I think they absolutely need to be removed from. Uh, the planning board's options that were presented today. I mean, I can understand wanting to avoid spot zoning. But. Uh, it's state imposed spot zoning, so that to me may be the better way to go. Um, but I was also curious because we do have areas of town. Where we have commercial and retail development. Uh, where some of these buildings have. For lease and for sale signs on them. Some have been empty for quite some time. I'm thinking of the co-op production. Building, um, that I believe has been released for, I don't know how many years at this point. Um, I, I, I'm under the impression at least that the oasis is up for sale. There's a lot of small businesses there that could easily be accommodated if a building went up. And the businesses are on the bottom and apartments are on the top. It makes more sense to me to have. This development closer to Attleboro because that's the most direct line to commuter rail. Um, as opposed to having it here on one forty.
The one twenty-three area toward Attleboro was another one of the areas Serped highlighted as potentially an interesting option to look at for us.
I understand that, but I, I, I just didn't know and I haven't heard in this discussion. How much trying to make, you know, trying to address areas that are not. Being used right now, it, what we can do to make them more attractive. And so they could be redeveloped and if it ends up being housing on the second floor. I know we don't want the housing per se, but. If it helps those businesses actually be functioning business, businesses that we can get taxes from, it seems to make sense to me that we should at least look at it. And the other areas that I had thought, um, that we had been discussing here. Was, um, you know, there's the gym at Pleasant Street that's open and closed and open and closed. That's a pretty. Large parcel and I think there's multifamily housing behind it as well. That could be, have been looked at or may have been, I don't know. Um, there's the mill complex on Barrow Street. That's, you know, what's, is it something?
Yeah.
And, um, even, um, you know, smaller, if you needed it, Wetherell's, that's been empty for a really long time on South Worcester at one twenty-three. So because.
There's actually somebody operating in there now.
There is somebody in that building? Okay, I wasn't aware, but I feel like there are enough, we're all familiar with what's been empty. Um, the old O'Brien, was it O'Brien's, the restaurant? You know, like, these are parcels that seem to, you know. They're not been used for a long, long time and it would be nice for them to use for the commercial and retail. Use that they, that was intended. And if we have to take a little housing with it, I don't think that's a terrible thing. So just to recap, I really hope you will not go with the. Um, zoning option that includes the multi, um, families across from the Turner Players Club. It's also on the reservoir. I mean, you know, we should, we should do everything we can to keep the light off the reservoir. Light disrupts the growth of plants, the growth of animals. It's just not good for the ecosystem there. And or, or the people who live on the other side of the reservoir, anybody who's out in the reservoir, reservoir. Um, in the evenings and plenty of people are, so I think that should be the one that you stick with. And if you do end up not taking this tour in October or not passing in October. Take another look at how we can better use what we have now that's laying fallow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Senior.
You have more?
Yeah, um, I do want to say, I know Bridgette, you had your hand up earlier. Um, if you'd still like to speak, I'll, I'll go to you next, otherwise.
Yeah, sure. I just had a quick question on project car Oak Street. Um, it's more of a clarification question than anything. Uh, because a lot of stuff's been said, so. Fall, obviously, uh, none of what Rob presented is going to be ready for fall. I, I get that now. Um, so, uh, first of all, I, it was a little confusing, um. But if we choose, I wanted to go back to something I think Tim and Rob both, both mentioned. Was if we pass this zoning in a fall town meeting in a couple of weeks, we can go back and change it potentially in spring?
We can change any zoning article we want at town meeting, this one or anything else.
Okay, so the, but specifically this one, like we could change, we wouldn't have to go with TPC, like hypothetically. Even if we pass it up, we could amend it. Okay, so then off of that. We don't, we won't have the grant money to amend it because of deadline or no, we will have it because we passed it technically.
Um. The, if we pass something that the state approves of, we will be in compliance with the MBTA community's bylaw.
And then we could change it to something else in the spring because we passed it in the fall.
We can change any zoning article we want it if we up, notice it properly and take it up at town meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all.
Yes, thank you. And Mr. Marsan, I see you have your hand up as well. Any further comments? I know you've spoken at our last couple of sessions as well. Sorry, Mr. Marsan, you're on mute if you're speaking. Uh, there we go. I hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Um, just have a couple of questions. Um. At your last meeting, you had spoken about possibly, uh, split zoning the piece of property at TPC. To, uh, not take the whole piece of property. Is that something that you're still looking at?
Yes, that was one of the options you reviewed at the start of the session. Um, but because of the wetlands on the site, the split zoning and taking the full lot. Is not. Too much difference if we look at that a lot in isolation.
Okay, um, another question is, uh, New England ice cream, uh, still available. Uh, I think all of the, uh. Everybody around there has been noticed as well. Is that true?
New England ice cream is one of the lots we could consider at fall town meeting, yes. It was something that the board voted at our previous session not to include it, our. Not to include as we moved forward in our last session. Um, but it is something that was, that was noticed and could be part of what we put forward at town meeting.
Okay, um. This is more of a comment. Um, I would, uh. Like to see possibly a, any development that, uh, you propose. For this MBTA overlay, be put on a piece of parcel that is already developed so that. Um, one, we may not have a net increase in housing. Or two, it would deter somebody from wanting to develop it more. My last question. What are, I'm looking at the, uh, the law. That was, uh, handed down and I'm looking at the, um. Grants that we would not be.
Yeah, so that's. Yeah, so the grants are really the core part of what, I think there's been a couple of references to the Milton case. Um, in the MBTA community's law, so the actual legislation that passed through legislature. There were, I think, four or five specific programs that were called out. Um. In their guide, in the agent, state agencies guidance that came out after that regulation, so. Here's the law, here's the agency's guidance on how to comply. In the agency's guidance, they included a much longer list of potential funding sources. Which they said would also be in potential jeopardy for non-compliance. Um, so that is really, I think. One of the central pieces of the Milton case which won't be resolved before fall town meeting is, um. Can the state expand beyond the programs that were specifically cited in the legislation in terms of penalties for non-compliance? And speaking today. We don't know what the court will say.
Tim, isn't it right now there's four specific grants?
Yeah, I think, I think it's four, but they've been, yeah.
Did you just give the list for the people so they can know them?
Yeah, I, let's see, I've gone through it. I don't, I still don't know it by heart yet, but I'm close. Um, I've.
I see, I see thirteen now, Tim, that, uh, grants that, uh, uh, that are under. Number nine determinations of compliance.
Yeah, I'm trying to, uh, so the ones that are written into the guy, the statute. Are Mass Works, Housing Works, Housing Choice and the Local Capital Projects Fund. Um, and I won't go through the laundry list.
I'm looking for.
Oh, I am pulling this directly from the presentation that I've given, that I gave to you, uh, last week.
Station that you gave might be different from what the actual written law is, so.
This is, this is what, this is the guidance that we have.
From who?
These are the ones that are in the statute. These are essentially what the state has added to their list. Paul, if you have any further content, comment on that.
Yeah, the, the second bullet come, they added those to their guidance document. Which the Attorney General has said is part of. She's interpreted that to mean these are subject to. Uh, i- if we're not compliant. And Milton's, Milton is disputing that because. The, only those four on the top are the ones that are in mass general law.
So I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, the law that I printed off of the, uh, um. State's website and, um, I don't see those on there. I see a list of thirteen grants that are not available to us.
Roger, could, I'd be interested in getting that list, because I'm looking at it too and I'm seeing four. An MBTA.
Community planning grants, Massachusetts Downtown Initiative, Urban Agenda, Rural and.
Those are the ones that are in the guidance document, not the ones that are in the statute under Mass General Law.
That's it, is the Housing Choice Initiative. Um, the Local Capital Projects Fund, the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. And the Housing Works Infrastructure Program. Those four are what is cited in the law. Uh, I'm reading directly from.
Um. So my, uh, my last question, Tim, is, um, is the, um, mobile home park. That's, uh, on.
They were not noticed.
They were not noticed?
Correct. They were noticed as in a butter, but not as a property that was subject to this overlay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Last question from on my deck.
Sorry, Rob.
Is that the last question that I've, I'm on for? Or is Cheryl coming back?
I'm not sure if Ms. Senior wanted to speak again. If she would, then, uh, she certainly waited long enough to speak the first time.
Of course, but I'll keep it, I'll keep it, uh, short. Um, I just want to.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up a little bit there.
I'm sorry, is this better?
Yes.
If an option is brought to October town meeting and it. Whether, whether it is or isn't approved. Another option can be brought to. The Springtown meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
We can change any zoning bylaw at town meeting that we so choose.
Okay, so that being said, I think you said earlier that. The grant monies have been expended for this purpose, so would you have the funds to do what would need to be done to bring an option? To Springtown.
That would be no different than bringing it to a special any or any other session. Um.
Alright, so you did something about funds, so it, it would, in other words, it comes up.
That, that speaks to the technical assistance from Serped, the grant itself. Um, so the. Without that grant, whether we would have additional funding. From the town for additional technical assistance or whether it would be something that. The board and the town manager and town staff would choose to take on internally. Um, that is a discussion that would need to be had.
Okay, and so the only other question I would have is. Regardless of what happens in October, will the board maybe revisit what was done in lieu of the options? That have been brought to you at this meeting?
Yes.
Not saying.
That is certainly something that.
Just saying.
That is certainly something that we can evaluate and decide whether to move forward with one way or another. Whether that is through the board, there's nothing that stops a citizen position either. Um, so. From the board's perspective. If. Somebody brings forward a proposal to review this overlay for Springtown meeting. Um. I would suggest that. We align on timing for that. So that, okay, if we're gonna do Springtown meeting in May, the warrant deadline will be. Mid-April. We would want to have. Rough drafts by late January. I'm making that up. Um.
No, I know.
But that would be, that would be the sequencing that I would probably lay out in terms of what we would evaluate. So it would be something that would, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that goes for anything that we're looking to do for any zoning article.
And, and I would just add, because of the complexities that the state ties to this. If we were to look at a Springtown meeting, we probably need to start looking at this. Late fall, early winter. Because there's a lot of, uh, we have to run models and, you know, it's not, it's. Not that any rezoning is simple, it's not, but this adds, there's a, there's some layers of complexity here that. We need to make sure we have the capacity to do and figure out how to get there, so, but it's, it's a little more time, it's, it's more time consuming. Than a, than a typical, uh, rezoning request.
Well, I guess that's why I asked, because.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a great question. It's a great question and, um, we need to, I need to start. You know, yeah, looking at that, what happens? If, if this, you know, if this fails or. You know, what happens if this passes and, and there's a mood to revise it, so.
So, um.
Okay.
What would happen if this path, and between now and spring, somebody did come in, they, turns out they struck a deal with the TPC and they've already started. Uh, you know, they've started going down that path and then we come in and say we're amending it. I think that would be a problem, wouldn't it?
They would, if they have filed by the, they, they are governed by the zoning rules that are in place at the time that they file.
So if they file before Springtown meeting, even if we change it?
Yes.
Okay, so if there was somebody already kind of eyeing this and planning on doing it and they jumped right away, they become locked in, don't they?
As long as the application is valid and actually.
Fair enough.
Real, in theory, yes.
Okay.
But they would need, they would, they would need to have an actual plan. For us to evaluate in a timeframe that actually was. Easy, that was.
They'd been.
If they come forward and have something on a napkin, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't pass mustard.
But if they'd been thinking about this all along, say, working on that idea, saying this is coming, I'm gonna target it. Um.
That's not the expectation that we've gotten from that property owner.
Well, don't, let me finish what I'm saying. They would have their ducks along a lot better. Now, I just, a question on that. Has, has there been anybody that's come around asking or has, has there been any word on that? Ha- has anybody come and talked to us about, hey, are you guys gonna zone that? Can we do something with it?
We've had discussions with the TPC property, yes.
No, no, not regarding this.
Okay, because I, I'm wondering.
And not regarding anything on TPC.
Yeah, but I'm wondering if somebody did pounce like that and if they've been just waiting in the weeds, getting their ducks in order, they could. They're locked in and so I think folks thinking, oh, we could just pass it in the fall and then amend it in the spring, that's. I don't believe that's a very good path. Okay, ju- just like I don't believe anybody grabbing any of my suggestions and trying to insert them at town meeting is a good path either, by the way. I want to be clear on that.
Thank you, Rob. Um, I do want to just be mindful here. Um, I have a couple of the hands that re- raised here. Again, we're looking at this. Um, I do want to just be mindful here. Um, I have a couple of the hands that re- reused here. Again, we're looking at this meeting to choose the map that we put forward for Fall Town Meeting.
Okay.
So
The reason I want to present these, though, is because as people go forward and vote, and I'm sorry for this, Tim, I don't but um I want them aware that there are other choices. They can just say no to this, and there are other things they can do. But I'm making it clear what they are, what the, you know, there's some hoops, you know, won't hide that.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, but I don't know that this is here. It's not like, well, you gotta vote for this. Because I think originally people felt like they would just be told, you gotta, the state's gonna whack us. And um, yeah, I want to make sure we have choices.
Understood.
If this gets voted at town meeting, the best thing I think we shall do is just say, well, that's a done deal, and this is Norton's direction. I don't think we should be moving to change it in the spring. I think that's a funky path. I think if you get it at town meeting, it should stay that way. A last thing, on people being on the planning board, I want to remind everybody, I got on the planning board by by running for unopposed for one of two open seats, just to give you an idea of the situation there. It was a joke to me, you'd never even knew, most people didn't even know I was running. I didn't even bother advertising or saying something. I just put in the papers and few months later was on the planning board. So to Tim's point about if more people want to come in and help, you know, it was that easy for me, honestly.
I do see two more hands raised. I do want to get to those, and then if any, nobody minds, we'll do a short five-minute virtual recess and allow everybody to get a sip of water or take a quick, quick step away here. Um, Bridget, I saw your hand up first.
Yes, hi. Um, I know that this is new, and a lot of people are currently going through this at their own Fall Town Meetings. Um, I was at one the other day, but do you know of anyone who the land is being looked at by developers and people have put in plans, any towns in this zoning area?
Based, based on the new overlay maps that have been published, if there are any new developments?
Yeah, like are there people actually building on anyone yet, or is it all still just zoning?
I'm not sure specifically. It's still pretty new, and every other town is also layering theirs over existing developments or things like that. Paul, if you have any specific examples, or if it's still?
Yeah, I think, because the 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 earliest ones adopted only a year ago.
Right.
Which is pretty new, so I'm not, I'm not aware of anything that's come to any town that's adopted it already.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Ms. Senior, one more time, if you don't mind, since you have your hand up again.
Sorry. I was just curious, when is the board going to be co- going forward with a single option for October? And if so, when, and when will we be made aware of the pick?
That's what we're looking to do at this meeting.
Is to pick it at this meeting?
Yes. That is the entire point of this meeting, is to choose the map that we submit to town meeting.
But are you going to close the meeting having cho- haven't chosen it?
That is my expectation, yes.
Okay, alright then, again, I would go with whatever option doesn't include those uh multifamily units or anything that's on the reservoir side of Route one forty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Senior. Okay, I'm just gonna set, if nobody has strong objections, just, we'll just, the board will just take a five minutes here, and then we'll rejoin. Any objections?
Questions on my presentation? Did we just exhaust them?
That is all the hands that are raised in the meeting.
I'm gonna go back on mute then. That's, I was looking for my cue, I could do that.
Okay.
I get sick of the sound of my own voice.
Five minutes is good.
Okay, so we'll take five minutes, and then we'll rejoin the meeting here and continue discussion. Okay.
Go ahead.
So, as I've, as we've gone through a couple of times tonight, uh, what we're looking to do as a board this evening is submit what we will have for the Fall Town Meeting for the proposed overlay district. And I'll say our job to transmit this to town meeting and have that discussion about what town meeting the town's legislative body wants to do with this map. I will say this personally. Regardless of how we report, how we vote on this, I will say my position is, how we would vote on this as members of town meeting, is that my view is the planning board is submitting this for town meeting to review and discuss and vote on. Regardless of how we vote on whatever map we submit, I know that that may not reflect how each of us might vote on it at town meeting. And I would never imply that any of you are in favor of any of these maps in the final vote. What we're doing is choosing the one to submit here. So, with that out of the way, we went through all these at the beginning of the, beginning of the session. This is where we started. This is where we left our last meeting. Uh, and these are the two PGA lot-specific proposals, one for the full lot and one for the parcel, the partial, which cuts off kind of the, basically this left top corner there and trims in a little bit elsewhere. So for members of the board, do we have any questions about any of these maps? Is anybody, I'm ready to make a motion?
I guess I'll just make a statement to start. I mean, my first, if I had to pick two options out of this to figure out, everybody that we've heard from has kind of agreed, we need to cut it down some degree, so I'm I'm fine with that. We've already cut a couple of parcels off. I wouldn't go back to that. So, so that leaves what we have with the apartments across the street and and the PGA. I am absolutely fine with the idea of taking the apartments off too, and only doing the PGA uh charities lot. I'm okay with that. That meets all of our requirements. I'm not so much of a fan of the split zoning lot. Just fundamentally, I don't really like the idea of splitting lots. And it kind of does put us right next to the we might be under compliance. It it's kind of right on that edge. It give or take. Man, it's still the same lot anyways, whether or not it has that back section. Personally, I I think I would just go with the PGA only parcel. That's the most, most compromise we can do right now.
So that would be this two-way scenario that I'm putting up on screen now. I'll, you said that was a statement, so I won't take that as a motion, but if you'd like to make a motion, you can.
So moved. Yeah, it's a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion from Jim and Steve. Is that a second? One of you has a second, one of you has to motion.
Just second.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Rob, if you'd like to make a statement, or? Okay.
I've spoke plenty.
So we have a motion and a second. I'll go through each of us for the vote on the motion. And this is, so, um, Jim, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
No.
Okay, and I will vote yes. So three to one.
Right.
This is the proposal to go forward at town meeting. Okay. Is there anything else that we wanted to say to this uh before we close this evening?
So the scenario two is the one we're taking to town meeting? We just voted to?
That was the vote? We can certainly to if
No, I'm not looking to reconsider. I want to make sure I just go away knowing exactly. So scenario two
Two A.
Two.
So so the PGA lot only, without split zoning
Okay.
Was the motion, so two A.
Okay, gotcha. I'm not set. That was just a question, so I understood.
Okay.
And I will tomorrow morning submit this to both, uh, the town manager, so this is what will go forward in the article, so it'll just be this one parcel, and I'll let SERPED know too, because then they have to recalculate the the calibration tables.
Okay. Okay, and just to to restate, I'll scroll through the whole thing here. What the board has voted on to submit to town meeting is this one parcel, which is the PGA parcel as their proposal. And this is how it breaks down against the compliance matrix with sixty-eight point three acres of which fourteen point two is roughly wetlands, so we're at fifty-four point one against a minimum of fifty, so we are pretty close to that number from an acreage standpoint. So. Is there anything else anybody else wanted to say this evening?
Yeah, thank you to everybody that's participating and has been coming to the last few meetings. It's actually, all things considered, good to hear the voice of the people.
Agreed. Good word, Steve.
Well said, Steve.
Thank you, everybody.
I don't say this about the heater, that's not even close.
You don't, no, sorry.
I guess, yeah, stop praying.
Okay. If there's any other discussions we'd like to have, otherwise I'd look for any other motions from the board.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes, thought about saying no for fun.
I've thought about that so many times.
Yeah, I get how voted, but it would be fun.
And I will vote yes as well. Sorry to call everybody out for such a short session after the recess, but uh thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for your participation, both members of the public and members of the board.